Flag of our nation. Thank you. Commissioners, before we get into the agenda, I would like to suggest a slight change in the order. In that, item three D and three E be moved up prior to three C. That's to expedite matters a little bit more and to give us additional time to discuss, I'm sorry, yeah, the rezoning on the Carmel Church Station north. So if there is no objection, we will move item three D to make that C. We will move item E to, to make that E. I'm sorry, I'm getting out of order. C.
Mr. Chairman.
D.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Uh, didn't you want to move that before three B? You wanted to have that after three A.
Had, had we discussed moving, uh, moving it after three A?
Yes, that way the two comprehensive plan amendments were heard together at the end.
Alright, so item three D will move, be moved to three B. Three E will be moved to C. And three C, which was, will now be three D. Am I correct on that, sir? Okay, so now that we are as clear as the Mississippi River.
Yes.
Alright, uh, our first item will be, uh, BDC Lady Smith. Our next item will be text amendment O one, text amendment O two to follow. We will then get back with, uh, man, it's got me all messed up.
Three C before.
On page two, just move the two bottom items to the top of the page. That's what you want, right?
Correct, yeah, that's what we'll do. Alright. After our twelfth revision, so we're going with BDC Lady Smith, the two text amendments. Then we will start in with Kenneth Ragland and Carmel Church Station. Any objection?
Well.
So done. Our first item on the, the agenda will be, I'm sorry, jumping ahead. Ladies and gentlemen, let me introduce ourselves, just in case you don't know who we are. To my far left is Mr. Purcell Minor, representing the Manapanaia District. To my immediate left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. To my immediate right is Mr. J U D Young, representing Reedy Church. Mr. Young is our vice chair. To his right is Mr. George Weber of the Madison District. To his right, and on the very end, is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Carolina. Staff tonight, we have Mr. Craig Pennington, our planner. Mr. Leon Hughes, who is the Director of Planning and Economic Development. And we have Mr. Chris McKenzie from the County Attorney's Office. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. John Voit, our IT specialist, who is, uh, keeping us on the air. And with that, we will move to approval of the minutes from our January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting. Commissioners, have you had an occasion to review the minutes? Are there any changes, additions, or corrections?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, sir.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weber, seconded by, who was the second on that?
Mr.
Mr., Mr. Williams and Mr. Young. Any discussion? There being no discussion?
Empty.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Alright, sir, under subdivisions, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First case tonight is EX zero one, twenty twenty four, the Covington subdivision Kids Fork Estates. The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception, I'm sorry, not a special exception, approval of an exception for the construction of a V dot road. Sorry about that, clicker stopped working. Applicants requesting approval of an exception for the construction of a V dot road for what constitutes a major subdivision. Major subdivision is defined by the Caroline County subdivision ordinance as any subdivision which is not classified as a minor subdivision, including but not limited to subdivision of three or more lots or any size subdivision requiring a new street or extension of public water or sanitary sewer or any other public improvements or any re-subdivision of a previously vacated lot line in residential development of record. Review and approval of a major subdivision shall be in accord, accordance with section three dash one of these regulations. In order to subdivide these lots, a V dot road would need to be constructed parallel to Kids Fork Road to serve the lots created. Section seven point one of the subdivision ordinance allows for the planning commission to grant an exception for this requirement for topographical reasons. Parcel is to be subdivided, contains a pond, stream, and resource protection area surrounding the pond and stream. The existing parcel is a long slender parcel with approximately twenty eight hundred feet of road frontage. In this circumstance, the state road would need to be constructed over the pond, stream, and resource protection area of what constitutes lot two and the remainder of the, remainder lot on the plat provided. The applicant is requesting an exception to this requirement due to the environmental features contained within this parcel. All parcels shown on the subdivision plat are conforming lots of ten plus acres and meet the requirements of the RP zoning district. Comprehensive plan depicts this area as rural preservation. The subdivision is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the RP zoning district. In order to request this exception, a preliminary plat review is required as this constitutes a major subdivision. The plat provided meets all subdivision and zoning ordinance requirements should the exception be granted. That concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, sir. Um, Craig, I'm a little confused here. Sorry to say that. Could you explain, I mean, you don't have that little magic green light that, okay, yeah, good. Could you explain what you just said in black and white again, one more time?
Yeah, no problem. So when you create a third lot via subdivision, it becomes a major subdivision. And so in order for this to be approved as a major subdivision, this is Kids Fork Road that runs along the southern edge of the property. And a road would need to be constructed off of Kids Fork Road to access parcel one, come across to parcel two, and then come across the wetlands, pond, and stream, and RPA features, and floodplain to bridge that, and then come back down here to Kids Fork Road. So that'd be a V dot road that runs parallel to Kids Fork Road. So these driveways would have to be off of this road, not Kids Fork Road. So the, when you do a major subdivision, you can ask for an exception to the state road requirement due to topographical reasons only. And this is the topographical reasons that this exception is requested. Is that the floodplain, wetlands, resource protection area here would have to be bridged with a road in order to create this subdivision this way. With the exception to the state road requirement, each lot could have one driveway off of Kids Fork Road, the existing state road. There is six point eight acres, or sorry, six point four acres of available space in this parcel that is inundated with resource protection area, so there is still buildable area here. And there is an area where you can get the driveway in without crossing and touching any resource protection areas. So in this case, uh, all parcels meet the RP zoning district of ten plus acres. And the driveway distance of four hundred twenty five feet between driveways could be met with the twenty eight hundred feet of road frontage. Each driveway could be guaranteed to be at least four hundred twenty five feet apart and not cause traffic problems from people turning into their driveways.
And that's off Kid Ford Road?
Kids Fork Road, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Pennington, I was just wondering, I, I'm familiar with the area. The area marked in the, what is shown as, I guess, purple or blue, whatever you want to call it, uh, that's part of Tanya's swamp. And I was just wondering about any flooding issues, whether, you know, that, that is something that is going to have to be dealt with in the future or, or not, because they're going to have to bridge across that wetland, are they not?
If, if the exception is not granted to create these three lots, yes, they would have to bridge across the wetlands and RPA. Um, the floodplain, you can see the line right here, the floodplain stops right there. And the floodplain stops just outside of the RPA right here. So currently, if someone were to build on this parcel, they could build out, well outside of the floodplain. Same with this parcel, you can stay well outside of the floodplain. Should the exception be denied and the road have to be built, then you would have to build the road through the floodplain, through the wetlands, and through the resource protection area. And this would be a by right subdivision, so it, it could be built.
So the builder would have to build the road and maintain it themselves?
Uh, no, uh, our subdivision ordinance requires V dot to main, it could be a V dot road, so V dot would have to maintain it. So V dot would have to maintain Kids Fork Road. And then V dot would have to maintain a secondary road that runs next to Kids Fork Road, the bridge, all of it down to here.
Okay, so who'll have to build the bridge?
The, to subdivide these three lots, the owner would have to build the bridge.
So the request is just to have the three driveways going out to?
The request is to not build the state road so that we don't impact the RPA, the resource protection area, the wetlands, the stream, the flood zone with a bridge and with roadways through there, um, because obviously the bridge would have to have piers that are in the wetlands and, and the stream. So the request is to not build the road here and allow each lot to have a singular driveway onto Kids Fork Road.
How wide is that section right there where on this lot on the far left, the driveway coming in, how wide is that area, um, not including the wetlands?
So that area?
That's where the driveway would go.
So that area is approximately a hundred feet wide at the tightest point.
Okay, thank you.
So if we approve it, then V dot is going to have to put in the road?
No, if we approve it, then there will be no new roads for V dot to maintain. They would continue to maintain Kids Fork Road as they do. And, uh, if it's denied, then V dot, once that road is built, V dot would have to maintain both of those roads that are parallel to each other.
Alright, sir, that, that's all I have.
Mr. Pennington, I'm sorry. How is the traffic flow on that road?
Uh, I don't have a traffic count for that road, but it is minimal. Uh, there are not that many dwellings on Kids Fork Road, especially in this area.
Because that's my concern. I mean, I understand V dot doesn't want to maintain both those roads, okay? And, um, I think the solution to come out on that three driveways out on that road, I'm not, I'm not against that, okay? Because I think trying to build another road over there would be foolishness on everybody's part. Um, I just don't know what the traffic flow is on that road, and I would be concerned of that. And, and Mrs. Pennington says he hasn't had that data, he doesn't have that data.
Uh, I can tell you from my exposure to that area, right next to Schumannsville and all, all down through there, it is very rural, very little traffic. I don't know what the population density is right offhand, but it is very spread out. Uh, and about as rural in country as you'd like to be. It, it really is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Craig.
On the two existing parcels, are there homes on there?
Uh, I believe there are homes on those two existing parcels. Yes, if you look right there, you can see the one home, and there's a second one on that second parcel there as well. And those, those parcels that are previously existing are non-conforming parcels. They are not ten acre parcels.
This map on the right is a little different.
The map on the left is wetlands. The map on the right is resource protection area.
So the driveway would have to go across a resource protection area?
Not if the exception is granted. If the exception is granted, like we spoke about, there's at least a hundred feet at the tightest point between the RPA and that property line. It's just zoomed out too far. But there is a path for a drive, a hundred foot wide path for a driveway to come in without disturbing any resource protection area to serve a house here.
Thank you.
Mr. Minor, any questions? Mr. Wee?
I'm, I'm fine. They answered my questions, thank you.
Is, uh, Mr. Covington present? Okay. Alright, we're going to conduct a public hearing on this matter. Get the applicant, well, Mr. Pennington, if you would read the protocol?
Purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression and position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Alright, sir. Was there something else you wanted to say ju- just prior to, okay, thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing regarding EX zero one, twenty twenty four is now open. Mr. Covington, would you care to address the commission, sir? Do you have anything additional you would like to add?
Oh, sir, uh, it's been described very thoroughly by Mr. Pennington, uh, and I think, uh, everything there is, uh, you know, in the open for us to look at. Uh, there's, there are existing access roads on each of the three parcels already that are being used for timber maintenance and such as that. So, uh, there wouldn't be any interference as far as the RPA, but for the third parcel to have that, uh, existing road. And the traffic in that area, I lived there on that road, uh, it's very light. It's a school, it's a school bus and mostly farm tractors and log trucks. And the, uh, current residents that live there, of course, which are three.
Alright, sir.
But I would appreciate all, all your consideration and time to, to approve this.
Alright, commissioners, do you have any questions you'd like to ask of Mr. Covington? Alright, thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Last call. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? And seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion, sir.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we submit this to the board supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by, yes, sir.
Before you vote, I just want to clarify, this does not go to the board of supervisors.
That's right, it does not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Subdivision exception, the planning commission is the subdivision authority, and so this is your decision alone.
Very good. So it's our decision, our decision alone, and I assume your motion stands?
I still would make the same motion that we approve this application.
And my second stands. Any discussion further by the commissioners? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. The motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Covington.
Alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, now that that, uh, exception has been granted, uh, we need to address SB zero two, twenty twenty four, the, this subdivision plat. Uh, with the exception, this is all, this becomes a preliminary plat review for the finalization of this plat. Uh, so we're looking at that to make sure that it meets the zoning ordinance requirements. Staff has reviewed, reviewed this plat. It meets all zoning ornament, ordinance requirements, ten acre lot size, proposed drain fields, driveway separation, and all other subdivision requirements for the zoning ordinance. Uh, so at this time, we would need a motion for preliminary plat, uh, approval, uh, to continue with this case.
Alright, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pennington, I didn't hear all of that.
No problem.
Your mic, your mic a little bit.
Preliminary, sorry.
The, approve the preliminary plat, so the health department and different thing you were mentioning.
Yes, so.
Could proceed.
Yes, so that, uh, staff can sign the plat for it to be created as a subdivision. Uh, preliminary plat has to be approved by the planning commission. Uh, so with the granting of this exception, the preliminary plat does meet the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance regulations.
Comes back to us, correct?
Uh, the final plat does not come back to you. Uh, you look at the preliminary plat, and should that be approved, then staff can move forward with the final plat approval.
This large one, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion for this. For this, um.
Approve the preliminary.
Preliminary plat approval. Was that in form of a motion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Minor for?
I'll second.
Okay. Dr. Horton seconds. Any further discussion by the commission members? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Motion carries. And I believe that we will conclude our business with Mr. Covington. Alright, uh, SPEX O one, twenty twenty four, BDC Blackwood Roads, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First public hearing tonight for, uh, it's case number SPEX zero one, twenty twenty four. BDC Blackwood is, uh, roads owner, uh, BDC Blackwood. Applicants requesting special exception to allow private roads in the Lady Smith Crossing Plan Shopping Center. The Caroline County subdivision ordinance requires that when land is subdivided, a V dot road shall be constructed to serve all lots created. Lady Smith Crossing is a planned shopping center that was approved in two thousand fifteen, fronting on Lady Smith Road. At this time, only three lots have been created via subdivision in two thousand sixteen with the approval of the plans and plats for the proposed Walmart that was not constructed. The owner of Lady Smith Crossing Blackwood Development Corporation would like to request that the roads in Lady Smith Crossing be private roads at the time of future subdivision. Article eleven, division one, section six of the zoning ordinance allows for the board of supervisors to approve private roads in a planned unit development. The owners provided a document that details the road maintenance that land purchasers would adhere to should they locate in Lady Smith Crossing. The maintenance of the roads in the shopping center subdivision would be performed by the landowners who purchased a lot and the developer. Uh, after speaking with the developer today, the developer would maintain the roads himself and not the users there. He would maintain ownership of the roads and, and maintain those. Uh, New Green Road that is, runs down the middle of the shopping center and highlighted in blue on your screens is currently partially constructed and would remain a V dot maintained road within the shopping center and connect existing Green Road and Lady Smith Road if the traffic signal is installed at the Lady Smith Sheets. Sorry about that. And that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
New Green Road would remain V dot maintained. Anything branching off of that would be the responsibility of the applicant.
Yes, that's correct. New Green Road would remain a V dot road from Lady Smith Road to its connection at, at existing Green Road. Uh, any other road constructed within the planned shopping center subdivision would be a private road. The road shown in gray on the layout that was sent is a preliminary, uh, layout. Uh, it's not necessarily where the roads will go. Uh, as the property is subdivided and sold off to different business owners, then, uh, the roads will be created at that time. So those, that may not be where the roads end up. Uh, anywhere within this land area where they subdivide and need access roads to access parcels, uh, those roads would be private.
And if they're private roads, we don't care if they just go around in a spiral or a triangle or, you know?
So our ordinance says that V dot roads still, or that private roads still have to meet V dot standards. And so radiuses would still need to be adhered to, um, same with paving and, and items like that.
Do we have a road management agreement?
Uh, the county does require road maintenance agreements for subdivisions that create, uh, more than three lots. Usually they're utilized on family subdivisions and minor subdivisions that might not have road frontage and easements serve three to four houses. Um, however, uh, there are also road maintenance agreements in any subdivision that has private roads. Uh, so a road maintenance agreement could be used in this scenario to make sure that the roads are maintained.
Shouldn't that be made a part of the package prior to any action or recommendation by the commission?
Uh, so the road maintenance agreements are not required until a time of subdivision. Um, but if you conditioned it now, then a road maintenance agreement would be required at the time of subdivision.
Commissioners, any questions?
You said, Mr. Pennington, you said subdivision, but that's zone commercial there, correct?
Yes, it'd be a commercial subdivision, um, so they still split lots off for different users. And, uh, the users would purchase or lease those lots to operate their business. Um, so they would have to subdivide this land to allow for users to come in and, and operate.
Mr. Pennington, um, with the, uh, road maintenance agreement, would that be enforced through by V dot or the county?
Uh, so a road maintenance agreement would be recorded at the courthouse. And then should the roads not be maintained, then the county could, uh, hold the developer responsible.
So, Mr. Bill, and I mean, the roads we're talking about, not branching off.
So it depends on how the developer subdivides. Should everyone that wants to occupy Lady Smith Crossing require quarter, or half acre lots, one acre lots to operate their business? Uh, then the roads would look different if you had someone come in and want a five acre lot for. Uh, then the roads would look different if you had someone come in and want a five acre lot for, uh, a larger, a larger business. So, uh, that's why this is a preliminary layout. And then as it subdivides and the parcels need access, that's where the road layout would come into play.
So do we see where the roads are actually gonna go before they're put in, or?
At time of subdivision. So at time of subdivision, they would have to provide, uh, doc, well, a plan that would show where the roads are to allow access to these parcels.
I mean, I don't think I have any problems with it, except that sometimes private roads aren't maintained real well and it's hard to enforce, but.
And so a road maintenance agreement in that situation, um, would allow the enforcement of fixing the roads. Should there be any issues with potholes or, um, any pavement issues there? Um, and if you look in their staff's suggested conditions, there was a road maintenance agreement item, uh, listed as condition number two.
We just like the area as it develops to, you know, be maintained and, and not look run down.
Yeah, then in that case, I would, you know, the condition is there under condition number two for a road maintenance agreement. And that's what would allow the county to enforce the maintenance of these private roads.
And hopefully we can. Cause then you have renters, you know, renting these commercial buildings start to move out and then.
Correct, Dr. Horton, I, I feel the same way. Okay, when we deal with the private roads, how much control do we actually have? Especially with them, with this new green road now, because the traffic's gonna be much greater than it was before. How much control do we have over the private roads, Craig?
So that would be with the road maintenance agreement. And the applicant is here, if you want to ask him any questions on his maintenance agreement that is already in place, that's in your packet or any future agreements, um, the applicant can answer those questions.
So you've already see, you've already seen the maintenance agreements on these roads?
Uh, there is maintenance items in the document that was provided in your packet, which is reg, uh, regarding the whole subdivision there. Um, so there is maintenance for private roads, uh, language in that document. Um, however, the owner, the owner applicant said that, uh, he'd be happy to do a road maintenance agreement, um, for enforcement. That's how the planning commission wants to, wants to move forward.
Well, cause right now, the way these roads are laid out, they might not be laid out this way. Is that what you're telling me?
Right, so the special exception was applied for on the whole parcel, the thirty eight acres. And so that would mean any road that was constructed in this parcel, in these two parcels, uh, would remain private roads and under the maintenance, under the maintenance requirements of the owner.
Mr. Penning, oh, I'm sorry.
Good, good.
I just wondered, do we have any other examples in the county where this has already been done?
Uh, there are many subdivisions with private roads in the county. Um, commercial wise, uh, most of the shopping centers that we have are contained on one parcel. And so, uh, the roads on those subdivision, or on those parcels would be travel ways and not roads.
On some of the shopping centers that we have, you've seen?
Yes, but there are private roads, uh, throughout the county. Um, there's private roads at Carmel Church, um, to access some of the truck stops and things like that.
How about, um, at Lady Smith, um, where Timber's Restaurant, all that development behind there, is that all private roads?
Those are intended to be public VDOT roads.
Those are VDOT roads?
Uh, they will be. They're intended to be public VDOT roads. They have not been turned over to VDOT at this point, other than, uh, Center Drive to the intersection of Commerce Drive and Lady Smith Road. That's the only one that's been turned over to VDOT so far, but the rest of them are intended to be VDOT roads.
So that will be, um, sorry, sorry, God. So that will be turned over into VDOT roads?
For the shopping, or for the planned industrial park that Ms. Horton was talking about, yes, those will be VDOT roads.
Only because I live in that area, so, thank you, Carol. I guess my only problem with this whole thing is the, um, not knowing the exact location of what we're going to be doing with these roads. I mean, this, right now, the, the way this looks, this site is broken up into about four different pieces inside of these roadways. But are they gonna add additional roadways, or is it gonna be five pieces of property here, six pieces of property? I, I don't know, I'm just having a hard time just analyzing this site plan all by itself.
So right now, uh, it is about five parcels there. Um, the issue with laying the roads out now and declaring them private would be that should the lot sizes change? And again, according to what user comes in, if somebody needs five acres for a larger big box store compared to somebody that needs one acre for a fast food restaurant, then the roads are gonna have to shift because the lot lines are gonna shift. So that's why the special exception is on the entire parcel. And at time of subdivision, they would have to have a plat review and a site plan review where the road locations and, uh, and how they're built to VDOT standards would be checked on the site plan and the subdivision plat.
Okay, thank you. At least there's some control.
Cause even in the future, uh, i- if the private roads were to be completed and the land be leased at a later date, that land, uh, another entity could come in and want to lease that land, requiring an additional road change, which would, I think, probably make it easier to accomplish, uh, without having to go through B, BDOT.
Uh, that would be correct. We would still ask VDOT to do a cursory review on the roads because, as we said, private roads need to be built to VDOT standards.
Right.
But VDOT would not take them over. And depending on how the, the land develops on the size of the lot, shapes of the lots, and what's required by the users, then it allows for the movement of the roads throughout this, these two parcels.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have anything further?
I have additional question if I might, sir.
I'm sorry?
I have additional question if I might. It appears as if the piece of land right next to the Exxon station is by itself, as if it's already been spoken for, so to speak. Do we know anything about that, that smaller piece that's there?
That lot is already created, uh, along with the Wawa lot and the Duncan Donuts lot. Uh, those have already been created. Um, depending on what user, uh, the owner gets to occupy that lot, then there could be a boundary line adjustment that moves the boundary line further south or west, um, depending on how much acreage that they need. So once a user is in place, then the owner would adjust the lot with a boundary line adjustment, and then the roads would accompany along with that plat.
Okay, so it would come back to your organ, it would come back to the county once that has to happen, if somebody else should purchase that piece of property, okay?
Yes, that's correct. They would, uh, not only that, would the owner have to come back for the subdivision and provide an access road and, and show the access point, should he do a boundary line adjustment, but the user would need to go through the site plan process, uh, where we look at the access points and the layout of the lot to make sure that everything's in conformance.
Thank you.
Mr. Pennington, uh, with all of the new development on the front, on the six thirty nine side, will the entrances be off of six thirty nine, or would they come in off of New Green Road?
So, and, uh, infrastructure plan was approved by, uh, the county and VDOT in July of two thousand twenty two. Uh, so what would VDOT approved coming off of Lady Smith Road is New Green Road at the traffic signal across from the sheets and next to the Wawa, and then a right in, right out where the one north-south road is running in. So where the north-south road touches Lady Smith Road, that is an approved right in, right out by VDOT. Um, the rest of the road could shift depending on the subdivision. But those are the only two entrances that they are allowed on Lady Smith Road. So therefore, the Duncan would be accessed off of a, uh, access road to the south, coming off of New Green Road. Same with anything that develops to the right there.
As these site plans are developed, as they're, um, sectioning off these, uh, who, who will review the site plans and approve them? Will that be, will it come back before us to take a look at this, or?
No site plans would come back for you guys. Um, however, the preliminary plats, as we just did a preliminary plat, the subdivision, when the owner goes to subdivide, the preliminary plat would have to be approved by the planning commission prior to final plat approval. So you will see any preliminary plat for subdivision and any access points that that subdivision requires. Uh, for site plans, once the lots are created, then it's reviewed by the reviewing agencies, VDOT Utilities, uh, Planning Department, uh, DEQ for storm water. Um, but it would not come back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Commissioners, anything further? Would anyone care to hear from the applicant, or would the applicant care to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, my name is Mark Greenberg. I'm with Blackwood Development Company. Um, we are the development company that bought the property many years ago with Walmart. Um, you know, we, Walmart obviously is no longer part of the project. We've purchased that land back from them and are in the process of working on the development plan. I think I can click, um, can I use your clicker? I think I can. I, I think I can maybe, um, clarify or eliminate some of the concerns, if I can figure out how to use this thing. Um, so, uh, New Green Road is, is in to this point here. This road here is in to this point here, and this road is in to this point here. So the, this quadrant is already built. Um, Duncan is, uh, going through site plan review with the county now. Uh, Wawa, um, is basically approved and getting ready to take their parcel. And, um, we are in active negotiations with other users for other parts of the site. Um, so we have a couple of things here. First of all, when we did the deal with Walmart, um, we recorded and it's of public record, uh, what's called an, uh, an REA or, or real estate easement agreement. Though, in that agreement, we have detailed specifications on how the roads would have to be built. Those, all those are still in place. Um, you know, they would, all, all roads have to be built to VDOT standards, all roads have to be maintained to VDOT standards. Um, and we will, we would be ma, we are the, the declarant under that document and are responsible for all road maintenance in this project. Um, the other users would simply, um, contribute their pro rata share of those costs at, if and when those, those costs are, are required. But we, um, under the recorded document, are, are responsible and required to maintain all roads to a standard that, you know, say Wawa or Duncan or anybody else who comes in here would require. So, um, there's no risk that the roads are not going to be, you know, well-maintained. The fact of the matter is, is that if you drive around this county or any other county and look at any larger, uh, retail or, you know, mixed-use development, i- it's, it's impractical or, or to some extent im, almost impossible for us to build public roads within the infrastructure of the project. Um, you know, it, until the project is, is basically fully developed. We would love honestly nothing more than to build the road to VDOT standards dedicated to VDOT and no, no longer be responsible for it. It's just not practical for that to happen that way. So as we develop the project out and work with planning, um, and the rest of the county on how these roads are going to, to integrate into the project to serve the users that come here, we will continue to build these roads um, to the highest standard so that eventually, if and when it is possible, they could ultimately become VDOT roads. But, you know, that's years away. Um, y- y- but, but if we didn't build them that way from day one, then there would never be any, any opportunity for that to happen. So, um, you know, I, I, and, and I guess the, there's maybe the characterization that, I think maybe when I was listening to the presentation, I kinda had this mindset that there might be these, these scattered roads all over the place. That's not the intention. Obviously, that would not be economically viable. So what, what we're going to ultimately end up with here is, you know, what you would envision as a road network for a, a development project that would have, you know, multiple users, both large and small, but all working together in a coordinated fashion. So, um, you know, I, I don't know exactly where the roads will end up because I don't know what the size of the users are yet. But, you know, they, they would, if you can picture a normal, you know, pro, development project, th- they would have the normal access drives that a normal development project would have to, you know, provide safe and convenient access, you know, at each level of the project and the development. Uh, I mean, I hope that, that clears things up a little bit. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have, but that's, uh, so the, the maintenance agreement is in place already. We'd be happy to file another one with the county that, you know, if, if you guys want more control. But, um, I just wanted to make sure you understood that there is a public, a doc, document of public record that, uh, lays out all of the requirements for how the roads have to be built, how they have to be maintained, you know, how that's paid for amongst all the other, uh, requirements of, of developing a project like this.
I, I thought I understood you correctly when you said that there was already an RMA in place.
It is in place, correct.
You know, I, I don't know if it needs updating or modification or whatever.
I don't, I don't think it does. I, I just, I don't know, you know. I think the, the REA in place is between us and whoever would become part of our project. It's a, it's a document of public record, but if the county wants additional, I guess, uh, oversight to, to have some, I, I don't know what that, I said to Craig, I'll, I'll give you whatever document you want. It can't be any more, any more restringent than the one that's already recorded. So we'll be, you know, but, but the one that's recorded now, just so I'm being clear, you, you all would not have, it's on me and the tenants that we would put in the project would come to us and say, hey, you're not doing a good job if we didn't do the, do it right. I- if you all want the opportunity to do that too, fine, we'll, we'll record another document or we'll sign another doc, document, which would give the county the right to have that oversight as well.
Thank you, sir.
Any, anything else?
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, uh, any, any questions, any discussion? There being none, I'd like to make a, I'm sorry, public car. I'm getting old. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna open a public hearing regarding this matter. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name, your voting district, and your comments. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Third and final call. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is closed. Our Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion regarding this matter. Whereas the exception request submitted appears to meet the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, I recommend that retract that. Where a special exception request SPEX oh one twenty twenty four for BDC Blackwood Roads appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan and future land use map, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that SPEX zero one twenty twenty four be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval with the condition that an updated or a, uh, acceptable road maintenance agreement can be attached there too.
Second.
Did I word that fairly enough, Mr. McKenzie?
I'll just clarify for the record. So this, you've already got two suggested conditions, the to wit, and then number two, which says, a road maintenance agreement shall be submitted with any and all subdivisions that may occur within the development. Um, so it sounds like maybe you're, you wanna tweak that, or you, you wanna change that? Um, so it sounds like maybe you're, you want to tweak that or do you, you want to change that language? You want something additional to it?
I, I, I don't think tweaking it is probably necessary at this point, uh, as long as it is acceptable to the county.
Yes, so that when the property is subdivided, they'll, there'll be a condition that a road maintenance agreement be submitted with that development. Um, and I think that would address, as you heard, there's a easement agreement between the declarant and the users. So about maintenance of the road, and that's public because it's recorded, but the county's not a party to it, so it wouldn't have the ability to enforce it. This maintenance agreement would, as you heard, give the county the direct ability to oversee things. So you've got a belt and suspenders kind of approach where there internally, they should be dealing with it through their road easement. Uh, but if, if necessary, this maintenance agreement, once the parcels further subdivided, would give the county the ability to enforce any failures to maintain the road.
All right, so, so we can just let the, uh, suggested conditions.
It seems to address the same thing that you mentioned in your comment.
Let that stand.
Okay.
Okay, very good. All right, motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Weaver, I believe.
That is correct.
All right, sir. Commissioners, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes carry unanimously. Special exemption is going to the board with recommendation of approval. All right, Mr. Pennington, I think we're going to take the text amendments on the next order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your text amendment tonight is TXT O one, it's twenty twenty four. Staff has provided a text amendment that would allow for automated car wash in the PSC planned shopping center zoning district. Currently, any type of car wash is allowed in the B one zoning district. This text amendment will allow for automated car washes only that utilize a structure where a vehicle is guided through. And the text amendment reads as follows. Automated car wash, a tunnel structure with automated equipment that guides a vehicle through to receive a car wash and/or other services associated with cleaning the exterior and underbody of a vehicle and may include employees for drying and cleaning interiors. The following standards shall apply to automated car washes. Metal exterior siding shall not be allowed. Buildings must be constructed with brick, masonry, or other similar types of material. Vacuum stations shall not be placed in the front yard and each shall have a designated parking space. Structures shall be oriented so that queuing for the car wash cannot impede ingress egress to the property. Site will be staffed at all times when in operation. TXT zero two twenty twenty four adds PSC, uh, sorry, adds automated car wash as item T in Article eleven planned unit development, division four planned shopping center, section two permitted uses. Unstaffed, as you see in the top right corner, some automated car washes are not staffed. And so, uh, automated car wash that's not staffed, where you pull up to a credit card machine, stick your card in and run through the car wash, would not be allowed in the PSC zoning district. That would still be allowed in the B one commercial district. But to be in the PSC district, it would have to be staffed car wash. Uh, also the bay car washes that you see in the bottom left of your screen, those would not be allowed in the PSC zoning district. Uh, as it's not automatic, but would still be allowed in the B one commercial zoning district.
And what's the purpose of the two types of, I know, I know what the two types of car washes are, but why do we have two, one for each district?
So currently no car washes are permitted in the planned shopping center zoning districts. And staff felt that the self-serve car washes where you just have bays and they're not staffed, uh, don't fit with the planned shopping center planned unit development, uh, zoning district. So, uh, in order to have a car wash in the PSC planned unit development planned shopping center zoning district, it would have to be an automated car wash that is staffed.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver, I, I'd ask that you comment on item one on the first text amendment.
Yes.
Similar types of material.
Yeah, similar, similar, and I'm glad you picked up on that because that's exactly what I was looking at. Um, there are such things as we could use decorative precast concrete panels to stand up, which are very similar looking, okay? I think the, the statement that says or other similar type materials, I think if you add such as decorative precast concrete, it leaves a little more flexibility than just locking them into, uh, brick and masonry.
Yeah, I, I did find that a bit vague or broad as it were.
Yeah, no, I think such, uh, see, I think that's a trouble. It becomes vague when you say or similar types of materials. Okay? And I would say you could leave that and then say such as precast concrete panels. That gives the other similar materials a direction. Because right now there are no directions to other similar materials. So I would say if you do it that way, I would say other similar materials such as decorative precast concrete panels. Now that gives a direction to the words other similar types of materials.
All right, so, so you would feel better at removing similar types of materials?
No, you could leave it, sir, but I'd like to see you give it a direction, okay? In other words, when somebody reads that or similar types of materials such as decorative precast concrete panels, that gives them a direction. Just the way it is now, other similar materials, um, architects can think of all different things and say, oh, but that's exactly what I thought you meant. Now I think when you say such as, then you have explicitly stated what other similar materials could be like.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, concrete, what did you, what was that last word in your sentence?
Preca- precast concrete panels.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I have a question for staff. Um, in the current, um, uh, shopping center areas, i- is there a requirement for all of the buildings to aesthetically look similar?
There are standards in the PSC zoning district. Um, it doesn't call for them to look similar or be the same colors or, or things like that. Um, but there are, uh, building standards in the planned unit development, uh, portion of the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Would this fall under that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to have a public hearing on these two? All right, Commissioners, any questions regarding, uh, text amendment O two twenty twenty four? All right. We will conduct a public hearing for both of these matters. However, we will be voting on them individually. So the public hearing for TXT zero one twenty twenty four, TXT zero two twenty twenty four is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on either one of these matters? Anyone wishing to speak on either text amendment? Final call, anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing none coming forward, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, what be your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, uh, where is the, uh, public necessity, um, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TX O one two O two four, I recommend, uh, that TX, uh, O one two O two four be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by, uh, Mr. Minor, I think, Mr. Williams.
Could, could I just clarify as to, um, whether that includes Mr. Weaver's provisions to standard number one?
Yes, sir, that would include the, uh, slight change in wording or further defining of the materials to be used.
And, and I, I'll just, um, read it back, make sure I have this right, Mr. Weaver. Number ones, whoop. Right, can you put number one back up? Um, I think I got it here. Look at this one. I read it, but I didn't memorize it. Yeah, uh, so it's going to read metal exterior siding shall not be allowed. Buildings must be constructed with brick, masonry, or other similar types of materials such as.
Decorative precast concrete panels.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
That would be the motion, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion has been made properly seconded. All, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion for TXT zero one twenty twenty four carries unanimously. We'll need a motion for TXT O two twenty twenty four.
Mr. Chairman, where is the, uh, public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practices warrants the approval of TX O two two O two four? I recommend that TX O two two O two four be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Dr. Horton. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously, motion carries. All right. CA zero one twenty twenty three. Kenneth Raglin, EA Raglin Jr., EP Raglin, owners. William Webb Jr., applicant. Mr. Pennington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Applicant is requesting approval of a comprehensive plan amendment in order to create a growth area located adjacent to Route two O seven in Caroline County High School bounded by Golinsville Road and Rogers Clark Boulevard. The area consists of twenty five parcels and encompasses two hundred and forty four acres currently zoned RP with two cars, two parcels zoned R one. The applicant has requested approval of a rezoning from RP rural preservation to R one residential on parcel fifty four dash ten dash seven. The adjoining parcels of fifty four dash ten dash eight and fifty four dash ten dash nine are zoned R one in nineteen eighty five and are intended to be included in the overall development. The applicant has provided a plan with a yield of a hundred and thirty five lots, it's with a fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size, subject to the approval of extension of public water and sewer. The Department of Utilities has stated that this development that would require a pump station for the sewer system and a well that can supply fifty four thousand gallons per day of additional water capacity. The byright yield for the two R one zone parcels without water and sewer would be approximately sixty three parcels requiring one acre lot size. The rezoning case was deferred by the planning commission and the applicant in March of twenty twenty three after deciding that a comprehensive plan amendment to create the growth area to allow for the extension of public utilities. The proposed growth area is within a groundwater management area as defined by the Department of Environmental Quality. The aquifers in this area have a low replenishment rate and are monitored by the DEQ. Any development in this area shall provide test results for groundwater yield if a well is required to supplement the water supply. Maps here have been provided by DEQ that show critical cells in the aqua and Potomac Creek, aqua and Potomac aquifers in relation to the growth area. The blue diamond on your screen is the proposed growth area. Map on the left shows the aqua aquifer and critical cells that are located on the aqua aquifer, uh, where there is very low replenishment rate. The map on your right shows the Potomac aquifer where there's another critical cell, uh, that for lower replenishment rate there. Uh, DEQ did state that these maps only show current existing critical cells and do not determine any type of development for the area. A technical evaluation would need to be reviewed by DEQ to determine if any other aquifers were impacted or if it was going to create any new critical cells. So these maps are just showing you existing critical cells in the area. And any development that takes place in this area would have to provide information to DEQ for a technical review for any groundwater withdrawals to be approved. The poorhouse tract water system that provides water to the schools is currently a transient system and would need to be upgraded and permitted to a public system in order to serve residential development. Should this comprehensive plan amendment be approved, it would allow the extension of water and sewer to the parcels and increase development pressure in the area. Parcels located in the proposed area would remain zoned RP and would require rezoning in order to develop. The growth area would be designated on the future land use map in the comprehensive plan as appropriate for residential development. A two O seven growth area was previously designated by the Board of Supervisors in a nineteen eighty five comprehensive plan amendment, the result of which was the rezoning approval of parcels fifty four ten eight and fifty four ten nine at the same timeframe. The two O seven growth area was removed from the comprehensive plan in the nineteen nineties when all growth areas in Caroline County were reduced. The two existing growth areas of Carmel Church and Lady Smith have experienced growth in the past five years. Carmel Church growth area has experienced primarily industrial growth along the south side of Route two O seven corridor from Route one to the Mattapanai River. Now, proffer amendment was recently approved for the Belmont North subdivision, which will allow an additional five hundred and twenty six residential units. There are approximately six thousand acres of undeveloped land remaining in the Carmel Church growth area. Lady Smith growth area is seeing primarily commercial growth along the Lady Smith Road corridor, while the Pendleton Lake Caroline Lake Landor subdivisions continue construction. Bridlewood subdivision and Lady Smith growth, that growth area has recently had construction plans approved to build out the remaining one hundred and fifteen of one hundred and seventy one lots approved and has been renamed South Village. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan designates this area as rural preservation and outside of any designated growth area. With respect to public utilities, comprehensive plan states we have an expert there from the comprehensive plan. From primarily, the last paragraph of that, availability of public utilities is also needed to meet the density requirements for the urban development areas provision of the Virginia Code. As a growth management tool, public water and sewer are available only in the primary growth area limits. Public extensions are not permitted in the rural areas. The future land use map, uh, the future land use map in twenty thirty comprehensive plan identifies this area as appropriate for rural preservation and a growth area designation was removed in nineteen eighty five. The area is located in the groundwater management area and new residential development will require the drilling of at least one additional well. The current existing public water sewer, water and sewer system was extended to serve the educational complexes. This water system is a transient system and not permitted as a source for public consumption. Excuse me. Establishing a new growth area within the, with the expansion of water and sewer utilities will increase growth pressure outside of the current growth areas that have capacity for additional residential development. This request is not consistent with the policies and strategies in the current comprehensive plan containing growth areas and established growth areas and protecting agricultural resources in the rural areas of the county. That concludes the presentation and the applicant is here, uh, and I believe has a presentation for you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff at this time? All right, if the applicant would like to speak, have them come forward. Please state your name.
Uh, good evening, uh, planning commission members, chairman. Uh, my name is Dan Webb. I don't know that I really have much of a presentation other than I'd like to, to make my case. Uh, you know, this is a, what has prompted this was our trying to develop uh, the Raglin family's property that was rezoned back in the eighties. You know, at one point this area was in the growth area. And, uh, we would like to extend public water and sewer to these currently zoned R one properties. Um, if we are not allowed to, then we are, do, do have the ability and do plan to develop it by right with private well and septic. Um, I think this makes a lot of sense to be a growth area for the county mainly because it's on a four lane divided highway. So transportation needs are, are met. Um, we're right there at the school system. I would, can't think of a better location to place. Uh, residential growth and right where we have our middle high school, our, our recreational facilities that are there behind the high school. Everything is there. Why we would want to push residential growth to an industrial area like Belmont where, you know, additional units were just approved. When we can bring them here where it's away from the industrial growth. We want to encourage industrial growth, but a lot of times those residential developments don't want that near them. This would get them away from that residential growth and it puts it right there with the schools if there are schoolchildren and the other public facilities with, uh, the recreation. And there are public water and sewer facilities there. I understand it's a transient system. And, uh, if we are able to extend that system to our property, um, you know, one of the proffers would be that we would, uh, fund the necessary improvements to make it a safer human consumption, which I assume it already is, but, um, uh, you know, uh, we would make those. you know, uh we would make those uh changes and if needed, we would put a well in. Or maybe there's a potential ability to connect to the Carmel Church system and extend water from there. I mean, I know that's the county's plan is to have all of these systems connected and maybe we can play a part in that. So I'm just requesting your consideration to think about expanding and putting a growth area here on two oh seven where I think it does make sense for the reasons that I've stated. And you know, like I said, it it was in the growth area, schools, transportation, public utilities, they're all right there. And we currently have a zoned R one property that can be developed. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open a public hearing regarding this matter. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and your voting district. Public hearing is now open.
Hello, my name is Teresa Fields and I'm in the Mattapanai District.
Would you pull the mic down to you? Thank you.
My name is Teresa Fields and I'm in the Mattapanai District and part of my property is involved with the growth area. And they're talking about wells. We go dry in the summer. Hooking up to them, we're gonna go dry. We have our own well, our own sewer. This is not good. The traffic down two oh seven, you'll stop from seven to seven thirty every morning. Traffic is backed up. Two thirty to three every evening, traffic is backed up for the school district to add more growth to that area. You're never gonna make it down the road. We've lived there for my grandfather owned that since for ninety three years. This has been in the family. And it's just, it's not good. It's not good for the children. The schools are overpopulated as it is now. To put more growth in that area is is it's not good. It's gonna affect our water, our sewer. We don't want to be hooked up to public utilities. We haven't for ninety three years, so we don't want to now. And a lot of the people considering we did not get this letter and notification until Tuesday. Speaking with the other residents off of Golansville Road, they do not agree with it either. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Final call, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is now closed. I see we have Mr. Schiebel with us. Uh this commission dealt with this matter a little over a year ago. One of the main issues was the water situation. And I'm not sure everyone understands or knows what transient system is. If you could just enlighten us on that, Mr. Schiebel, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh just to clarify, so it is potable water. Um and it is currently serves the high school and middle school uh children, the two facilities there. Uh it is considered a transient system because people do not occupy the building twenty four hours a day. Um they're not drinking the water on a continual basis. So uh there is a a the health department allows a different testing standard um than you would if it was household uh for residential, what they call a community system. Um so there's more stringent requirements um for that. So because of that, we're currently not a community system. So it could be switched over to community system. Um additional testing would be required um on an annual basis um to do that. So we're still meeting all of the EPA and the Health Department regulations as a transient system. Um it just does require additional testing um throughout the year. So it would change over to community system as soon as you added the first home to it.
Uh so a- and I assume that the aquifer system that we had a little over a year ago uh has not changed any that we know of?
So Caroline County is in the eastern groundwater management area. Um and as part of that, DEQ is regulating the wells that are drilled in this area. So the two wells that we have on that system, uh DEQ reduced the amount of water that we were able to withdraw out of those um to try to protect the aquifer. So DEQ now says that there's an application that would need to be put in. Um and then there would have to be an evaluation to see that if any additional withdrawal would affect any critical cells within the area. Um as Mr. Pennington pointed out, there is a critical cell in Caroline County. So um that test would have to be done. Um and and it's a model. They would run a model. Once the application was done, there's a five thousand dollar fee. The state would run that. If there was additional capacity, um then they would say, well, you could drill the well. And if there's not, then you wouldn't be able to. So someone would have to go through that process of applying to drill a well and have uh DEQ evaluate the model to see if it would be uh available or not.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Schiebel, um I don't know if you're able to speak on this, but um based upon what you just said as far as drilling uh or doing a test with, are you at liberty to be able to let us know what would be the impacts and or the benefits?
So the the impacts of drilling a well, um you know, anytime you drill a well, you you right now, my understanding is is there's sixty five homes that could have wells that would be drilled now within that subdivision. So this would be drilling a well or two depending on um what you would get for a new well, whether that would be able to meet the capacity of that system or not. Um you know, the the benefit is is you then have drinking water that's served by the public, um treated and tested on a regular basis. You've got one well instead of sixty five wells. Um so those are really the the two benefits of whether it be a public system or private system. Um you know, from that, from our standpoint, we would operate it uh in as a community system if that were, it would be joined to the poorhouse system if that was, you know, as the board and the commission so wish.
So under the current zoning, it's uh has already been approved R one. Um we would, uh I guess, based upon the health department, they would 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 they be drilling deep wells for what's current? Would that have any impacts?
So they could do shallow or deep wells in their current system. So if it was a public drinking water, it'd have to meet the uh class one A well. Um just means it's a deeper well. The first fifty feet are capped off, so you wouldn't pull any water from the first fifty feet. So um it would actually be a deep well um if it was a county. If it was private wells, um DEQ would allow them to do either one.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Schiebel. Appreciate you giving by. Mr. Pennington. The applicant, as stated by right, can construct sixty three dwellings. If they are brought into the comp plan, would not the county run water and sewer to the property?
So currently, uh approximately sixty three lots, uh that's plus or minus. It would be a one acre lot size. Uh should they develop that, then they're gonna lose some acreage for roads and stormwater management. But uh yes, without public water and sewer, they could build approximately sixty three homes uh on private well and septic one acre lots. Uh if the growth area were approved, then water and sewer could be extended. And once you have water and sewer, then you can go down to a fifteen thousand square foot lot size. The original proposal for the Ragland subdivision was for a hundred and thirty five lots. They did not take all the lots down to a fifteen thousand square foot lot size, even though they they could have if they uh if they had water with the initial rezoning plan. Um but that's where the water and sewer comes in and the lot size and the density.
I'd say, uh it's well, because I I knew the one thirty five lot was potentially in there. It would also require V dot or someone to make road changes since it would be directly in front of the high school. So it would have to be some lane changing and and so forth.
Yes, so V dot, when the rezoning was being reviewed by staff prior to the determination that we needed to go through the comp plan review, uh V dot did provide comment that the turn lanes uh there in front of the school are already misaligned and that they need work there. Uh the I believe the applicant uh had talked about doing a proffer to fix the the road there on two oh seven. Um according to V dot comments uh with the turn lanes and the crossovers there, um but that would be a question for the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pennington. We designated Lady Smith and Carmel Church at the growth area, correct?
Along with Bowling Green, uh Port Royal and Dawn Growth Areas, yes.
And we had grown at growth area?
No, not at this time. Uh according to the staff report, uh there's approximately six thousand acres of undeveloped land still remaining in the Carmel Church growth area. Uh I did not run that calculation for the Lady Smith growth area since it's farther away.
Thank you.
Anyone else have have any questions?
So essentially, we're starting in new growth area. We probably have more applicants.
Yes. There there are other large blocks of land that are in very close proximity and it would mushroom.
Yeah, it's it's gonna mushroom.
Now, they they may come a time twenty five years from now that it's gonna mushroom anyway. Uh eventually, we're gonna have what they call a McGlopus. That that's gonna be one continuous city that runs from Maine to Florida.
Maybe, I mean, if if we um are still around, if the it's hopefully.
In the year twenty five, twenty five.
Yeah, it's good. But um but essentially what you're doing is saying we're gonna start a a new growth area.
Correct, correct.
When we haven't really used up our land in other areas. And uh
Yeah. What would be um for the applicant, what would be the timeframe of your of this entire development?
I mean, we'd like to get started immediately.
I mean, but how long would it be?
Uh you know, I mean, it's probably a community that would take, you know, I would say a period of five years to to go through and develop. Um something like that. You know, just talking about, I mean, at one point, this was a growth area. I mean, I know it was eliminated, but I just can't, um you know, just as a county resident, I live in Bowling Green. I know with some of the additional growth that we have had around town, we've really seen a lot of neat things happen on our main street with, you know, coffee shops, um ice cream, different restaurants that are there and things that I really amenities that I consider that I like seeing being a resident um with little growth. I don't want to see a lot of growth, but that growth um that we might see right here to me makes sense just because of its proximity to our schools and our this public facilities that we've constructed. And you have the transportation and the utilities that are that are there that could be taken advantage of. Um just wanted to point that out again, but you know, I would love to see that happen because it puts those residents a little bit closer to grocery shopping, which they would do in in Lady Smith and they would do in the town of Bowling Green. Um when you're at um say the the Carmel Church area, you don't have those facilities. So I think it, you know, has a lot of merit to look at. But to answer your question, I think, you know, it'd probably be about a five year period going through all of that.
Okay. And with the area growing, um one of the other residents mentioned um about the safety uh concerns of traffic, things of that nature right there, right in front of schools and um residents living in that neighborhood, if it were to be approved, um do you do you have, I mean, have you thought about any um concerns of the children crossing the highways to get to the school or to the playgrounds and things of that nature?
Well, there there had been discussion about that as we were going through the rezoning process. Um you know, in terms of transportation, um you know, the the level of service that um operates right now on two oh seven, I think, is is very good. There's not, I mean, I know it seems like a lot of traffic at certain periods of time, but that four lane divided highway has a lot of capacity to handle. But we were making some improvements to turn lanes that V dot had identified and we said that we would expand those facilities. There was discussion about putting a um a lighted pedestrian crosswalk across two oh seven and then uh building a trail that went down alongside the high school that went down to the middle school with a cross uh walk there. I believe that's something the county had actually worked on and tried to get funding through V dot. So those were some things that we were talking about doing, you know, through the rezoning process. But those were, you know, to me, those are rezoning items that um, you know, we would deal with. And this is a kind of a the the first step, just saying, hey, you know, can we designate this as a growth area just so that water and sewer could be extended? And then let's get into the details of what that uh that development would look like and how can we can enhance the area? You know, um two of the 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 groups that we have worked with here recently is, you know, I'm working with the Habitat for Humanity and we talked to them about, you know, potentially building homes in there. And then they have been partnering with the high school where they are building homes. Currently, the the high school is building a home right there at the school and they're going to bus it all the way across the county to Lady Smith to put it on a lot that the students are building. Well, I mean, what better place to do it than right there, right across the street? I just think there are tons of benefits for having, you know, this type of small um smart growth um that's there where, you know, a variety of of individuals can can utilize that. And the growth area that we're showing is not a large growth area. We're not talking about thousands of units. And we're only talking about a hundred and thirty five, sixty five of them are by or sixty three of them are by right with water and sewer that we can do today. So you know, we're just talking about a little bit of growth there. And I think it makes sense with its proximity to everything.
Thank you.
I'm still concerned about the traffic. Since they built a bridge from Maryland to Virginia.
Mm hmm.
The traffic has increased and the speed limit is sixty miles an hour through there. All I heard was you're gonna extend it turning land. But it's still gonna be traffic. I I I don't see them.
Well, I mean, I think that regardless of whatever we do, there may be an increase in traffic with um, you know, the congestion on ninety five, the the reconstruction of the bridge there going over into Maryland on three oh one. I mean, I agree that, I mean, you are gonna see some increases in traffic. But um you know, just for example, I had been looking at a number of the traffic counts on the bypass going around Bowling Green three oh one. And you know, we're we're only about sixteen thousand vehicles trips per day. It's not enough to even um entice a sheetzer or a wawa. I mean, we don't have enough traffic for them to even want to look at us. So I understand it seems like we have a lot of traffic, but in terms of things for commercial growth, we we really don't yet. But things that we're doing to try to mitigate our impacts to that were, you know, we're gonna be putting turn lanes into our site, but we're also going to be increasing turn lane lengths on other adjacent crossovers and 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 well, crossovers that would would help with the existing situation. Um that allows, you know, more stacking and then it allows for people to get over at a higher rate of speed to not slow down traffic are the main reasons for those. But um you know, we want to do whatever we can to help mitigate any traffic concerns that we can there. You know, that probably didn't answer your question.
No, but you know, you got two schools, you got the dump, you got the county park.
Mm hmm.
Then you got transportation.
Mm hmm.
I mean, that's a lot for that little congested area.
And 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 my only thought to that is if you, growth is going to happen regardless, there's gonna be a certain amount of growth and homes that happen in in the county. And what better place to put them than where those facilities are, where you're not taxing the other transportation facilities all over the county? You know, we push people, more people to Carmel Church. Well, they still have to come down and use two oh seven and use all of those public facilities. Why not put them a little bit closer? And so that you don't have, you're not taxing all of the other transportation uh needs. That would be my argument as to why it makes sense to to place it there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um so I do have a comment about creating a growth area here. And we we already talked about it's it's gonna mushroom if we do it. And we've already talked about we have to provide water. So we're going from, all right, so by rights right now, they have sixty three houses approximately. And they want to increase to two hundred and thirty five. So if it's the sixty three houses, um that's probably gonna be about a hundred and twenty six more kids, which is about four teachers. But if we go up to a hundred and thirty five houses, that's gonna be two hundred and seventy more kids, probably, at least. So that's gonna be eight or nine more teachers we're gonna have to hire and try to fit them into the existing schools. Um that's that's more than double the amount of kids. Plus, you know, we're talking about two vehicles per household. Um Mr. Minor was talking about vehicles on the road. So that's gonna go from about a hundred and twenty six vehicles to approximately two hundred and seventy. So everything's gonna double here besides providing water. You know, we're thinking of more than. You know, we're thinking of more than doubling this subdivision. So think about in terms of doubling the traffic and doubling what we've gotta provide for the children that are gonna be in this area.
And the schools are almost at capacity right now, Carol.
They are.
Just, sorry to interrupt, but before we get too far into discussion, if we've moved on to that, I just wanted to clarify that we got, the applicant came up and answered some questions, but I wanna highlight under the rules of procedure that he's got 10 minutes for response to public comment. He covered a lot of ground. I don't know if there's anything else that he wants to say, but I wanted to make sure that the chair was aware of that and that he's afforded the time that the bylaws provide for if he wants it.
Alright, so what are we lacking?
If you have any additional response, you are entitled to make that outside of the Q and A. So I just wanted to, up to 10 minutes. Before we get into your discussion, I wanted to.
Okay.
I mean, I think that I've covered most everything I wanna say. You know, the only thing I would say in, you know, talking about how we're gonna be increasing the number of units there, I mean, you know, there's only so much market or so much, there are only so many residents that are gonna move into Caroline at any particular time. And, you know, the ones that we're not gonna put here are probably gonna go to Belmont or Ladysmith. And my only point is I think it makes a lot of sense to have just a few here and, but that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Commissioners, any further discussion on this matter? I have some concerns. I have concerns about opening this area up to a new growth area. I have concerns about public utilities. I have concerns about the traffic safety. And we visited this area, this situation, a little over a year ago. And at that time, this commission recommended a denial, I believe. And I believe, is that correct, Mr. Pennington?
No, sir. No recommendation was made. We had a public hearing that was deferred in February and then we came back in March. And it was determined at the March public hearing that a comprehensive plan amendment was required for the case to move forward. And so the case was deferred by the planning commission and the applicant at that point to allow for a comprehensive plan amendment to be applied for, which was applied for in May of last year. However, our ordinance requires that comprehensive plan amendments aren't heard until January 15th every year. So we received that application and waited the timeframe and so now we're back here. But the zoning case is still at the planning commission. And so after the growth area has been motioned on by the board of supervisors and approved or denied, then we'll know how to proceed with that case.
Yeah, I meant to ask today what the history was because I wasn't exactly sure on it, but thank you for the clarification. I think on page three of the paperwork that we have, I think the last sentence for me says it to all. There are just too many concerns and I appreciate what Mr. Webb is saying, I really do. But I'm not gonna be in a position where I'm going to support a comp plan amendment with this one item, which is gonna have some domino effects in the future. Plus the safety hazards, the water and sewer, it's just not the right time, in my opinion. And someone else can feel differently and that's fine. But I'm putting that on the table for discussion if anyone would like to add to it or disagree with it, that's fine. And I'll just, in case you think located, this request is not consistent with the policies and strategies in current comprehensive plan of containing growth in the established growth areas and protecting the agricultural resources in the rural areas of the county. So it's just not consistent. And I'm happy to discuss it with anyone.
Entertainer motion?
I will certainly make a motion or someone else can make a motion. I thought I had closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Wait up.
I'm making a motion.
You're gonna make a motion or am I? Somebody go and make the motion. Where is the public that says city convenience, general welfare and good planning, land use and zoning practices warrants the denial of the proposed comprehensive plan? Got it twice. I recommend that the amendment be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of denial.
Second.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Minor. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. This matter will be forwarded to the board of supervisors with the recommendation of denial. Thank you, one and all. And we have saved the best for last. Mr. Hughes.
Sir.
We're ready for you, my friend. Go ahead.
Alright. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is a request by ADP Carmel Church Data Hub LLC and the property owner Carmel Church Station North LLC for a proffer amendment to the proffers of the Carmel Church Station rezoning on tax parcel 82-9A. Approximately 97 acres of an approximately, an approximately 256 acre area identified as land bay A in the Carmel Church Station project. The applicant is requesting the amendment to allow the development of a data center project. Amendments are proposed to the proffers related to the phasing, the requirements for a planning charrette, development of a design code, development of covenants, conditions and restrictions, traffic study, water study, performance with the approved generalized development plan, development regulations, architectural standards and other related proffers. If these amendments are approved, they will only apply to the area of the data center project and allow it to proceed in advance of the approved phasing and shirt planning process. The balance of the Carmel Church Station project will remain bound by the approved proffers. The Carmel Church Station was the Carmel Church Station was approved in 2010 in its own planned mixed use. Carmel Church Station is intended to develop as a mixed use project with a village core of the project using the traditional and urbanist design principles with not more than 8,569 residential units. Commercial and industrial uses are intended to develop within the project and are identified in the use charts of the proffers. Carmel Church Station was originally designed with eight land bays. And in 2020, the applicant requested and was granted a proffer amendment that removed one of the land bays on the east side of I-95 from the project. The Carmel Church Station project was identified as an urban development area in the 2006 Carmel Church Growth Area Plan and was again given this designation in the recent update to the comprehensive plan. Land Bay A is at the northern end of the project behind the Flying J Truck Plaza. And as a planned unit development project, the approved proffers include development regulations, the zoning regulations for the project. Thank you, Joe. So this is the approved Carmel Church Station land bay and phasing map. The blue area at the top of the map here is the area that was removed in 2020. It's a 79 acre parcel. Also note the dash line here, which represents the TOD core area of the Carmel Church Station project. And also note, which was supposed to develop, is a transit oriented development design and principles, this area in here. And then also note, that is related to the proposed train or rail stop that would be identified in this area here. We go to the next slide. This is an aerial view. The area shaded in green is an approximation of the 97 acres the applicant is proposing to develop. The north and adjacent to the green is the Flying J Truck Plaza, which is here. The peach area is the access road that currently serves the Truck Plaza and would also serve access to the proposed development from Route 207. This is a private road and will remain private. The project traffic was analyzed using five data centers with 30 employees per building, which is projected to generate 635 vehicle trips per day, 80 trips in the AM weekday peak and 25 during the weekday PM peak. The applicant's analysis concluded that the proposed data centers will have minimal impact on the intersection of Rogers Clark Boulevard and Welcome Way Drive and did not recommend any improvements. The Virginia Department of Transportation did review the traffic impact and intersection analysis and agreed with the conclusions of the analysis. Although the project will have minimal impact on the network, staff has expressed to the applicant that they should consider improving the radius on the Truck Plaza side of the intersection to allow trucks to make the turning movement without rolling over and damaging the curb. To date, the applicant has not committed to addressing this concern. The image provides, also provides a view of the existing development pattern along Route 207, which is predominantly commercial and industrial uses. And so where I'm referring to is kind of the quarter here in the south side of Route 207. You have the Truck Plaza here, here and here. And then you have additional industrial, light industrial uses here, here, here and continuing this area. Just as the Carmel Church Growth Area Plan had envisioned back in 2006. The area here that was taken out of the project is also getting some interest from light industrial users as well. So in terms of a land use and development pattern, this project is consistent with the current development pattern. Next slide, please. So this is a zoning map of the area that identifies the predominant zonings in the area. The red is B1 and on the east side of Route 1 in this area here, that B1 zoning classification extends south about 1,500 feet. And then the majority of the property is on RP, which is Rural Preservation, the gray areas. And then there are several parcels that are zoned industrial in the blue areas. And they, those areas were probably zoned prior to zoning being adopted in the county. Carmel Church Station is planned as a mixed use project and is represented by the green on the map. The star represents the general area of the proposed data center development. Next slide, please. This is a page from the applicant's GDP that shows the phase one of the data center project. The red dashed area line, the red dashed line represents the special district area. The 10 acre substation, the 10 acre substation here is identified in the orange. At the northern portion of the property, the future development areas are identified as the gray areas here and here. The teal areas represent potential stormwater management facilities and the green areas represent environmentally sensitive areas and the setbacks along the project's boundary. The initial buildings and access road with a gated access are shown in the middle of the project. So the access road is here, this is the Flying J Truck Stop here, this is where the road would continue to serve the data center project. This is a gated access point here. And as I noted, the green areas are open spaces and environmentally sensitive areas around the perimeter. These conform with the setback requirements of the PERC. The air, building A and building B are also shown combined, there would be 630,000 square feet. The two square, the two 315,000 square foot buildings I noted as A and B, as I just said, the yellow areas adjacent to the buildings here are generator pad sites and have enough space to accommodate 25 generators each. The data center use will be subject to the noise limits of the PERC. However, the generators are exempt from the requirement during maintenance and testing. The GDP also notes, as I said, the undisturbed areas around the perimeter were required. The substation here is about, I would say, 60 feet from the boundary. Next slide, please. No, one more. So this slide shows a site with the potential addition of three data center buildings in the subsequent phases in an area that may support an additional building depending on environmental constraints. These five buildings would total 1.6 million square feet of data center development. So as you saw on the first slide, you had buildings A and B. This slide represents the potential of two buildings here and then a third building. And then there's an area here in the blue that is identified as a possible area for development. But as you can see, there is some significant, significant finger of probably wetlands that run through that site. So depending upon how that could be mitigated, if it could be mitigated, there may be an additional pad site there as well. The power for the substation will come from the existing Dominion 230 KV line that is shown in red, that is here. The exact route to the substation has not been determined at this point. Dominion Power is in the preliminary design phase and will design several alternatives for consideration. The process of establishing the route is a public process that provides an opportunity for public comment. In speaking with VDOT, in speaking with Dominion, once the preliminary routes are designed, they will be shared with the public. The public will then have, they will have public meetings where there will be comments on those preliminary routes. And if there is any opposition to the preliminary routes, Dominion will investigate alternative routes prior to submitting the routes to the SEC for approval. The SEC makes the final determination on the routes. In conversations with Dominion, I did express that a concern that the proposed routes would have minimal impact on the growth area as an easement for a new line is approximately 160 to 200 feet in width. The blue area in this slide represents the entirety of the Carmel Church Station development. The star represents the area where the data center project would be. And of course, you can see the cross streets of I-95 and 207 and Route 1. The next several slides are a summary description of the proposed proffer amendments. These amendments allow the data center project to proceed in advance of the design charrette, development of the design guide and the phasing. As noted, these amendments would only apply to the 97 acre area identified for data center development. The remainder of the property will still be subject to the approved proffers. So I'll note in general, in section one, the applicant commits to the new GDP. They've amended some, added the words leased and leasing as the applicant will not own the property, they will lease the property. So the language is added to address that situation. And the covenants, conditions and restrictions language is inserted to exclude the data centers, you know, in land bay A from those requirements in at least three places there in the covenants and restrictions. And the utilities language is inserted that exempts the data center project from, in land bay A from conducting water and wastewater studies along with the data center. As the data center does not use an open circuit system. And then the reason that's there is because the remainder of the Carmel Church Station, when they come in for development, they will be required to do the water studies per the proffers. Also, the language is inserted that the data centers would not be required to do a traffic impact analysis on land bay A. But as I noted earlier, the applicant did do some analysis. But as I noted earlier, the applicant did do some analysis on the the traffic impacts um for the project. The proffers also note that the projects would have private roads and the language is inserted that the uh data centers would maintain the private roads. The site development and phasing language is inserted that uh. The development of Land Bay A could occur uh entirely in phase one. Drainage and wastewater management. Uh the language was amended to recommend, to note the change in the DEQ. And then recreation opening setbacks or an open space, uh the language was amended. That the project would conform with the um requirements of the the PERC ordinance. Also, in open space, again, language is amended to note that the project would develop in accordance with the the PERC. And then in the architectural standards, uh it notes that uh. The proffers applies to uses that are subject to the standards of the design code. And language has been added that the um again would exempt the data center project. From one, the the setback along of six hundred feet along I ninety-five uh for the electrical substation. In the development regulations, language was also amended uh because as I remind you, this case was approved with. Proffers and development regulations, which are essentially the zoning uh for the project. So those regulations guide the development throughout the project. And so. To make the amendment, you'd also have to make a few amendments within the development regulations. And so here again, it notes that the project would be developed in accordance with the the new GDP. Um language is inserted that uh the project will be um subject to those identified. Um. Proffers in uh section three point four of the de- design regulations and then also remove. Yeah, a condition, a proffer that was with the original. Case that a first site plan should be made within three years after the date of zoning approval. And that was removed because that proffer is just simply outdated. That further language continues um about the transect zones that um. Any development inland Bay A for data centers would not be subject to a separate regulating plan. As the the project will be subject to the requirements of the PERC and GDP. Um and then that kind of continues on. The language is there added to, is inserted. So that it essentially excludes um the area, the ninety-seven acres from the additional requirements of the regulations, the development regulations. In Article eight, lot area and dimensional requirements, the height uh for data center uses was added. Um and it also was added so that it would conform to the the PERC regulations. Um and then. As noted, in twelve, design standards is an exemption to the design code whenever it is is developed. Because if this is approved, as I noted, this development would be allowed to occur prior to the development of a design code. The fiscal impact, uh so based on the estimates of the AWS data center. Uh revenue is estimated over a twenty-year period. Uh you would, the project would average about four point five million in annual tax revenue. And uh also notable from a fiscal standpoint is that the issuance of a building permit. Uh will trigger the payment of a transportation proffer uh of forty-eight cents per square feet or three hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh for transportation improvements in the uh Carmel Church Growth Area. So that is a proffer that was uh kind of a holdover from the original. Project and it had a uh inflation factor on it. So when it was approved, it was thirty-five cents and now um. Adjusting for inflation, that is now forty-eight cents. So there's a, that's my presentation. Um the applicant is present. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh I have a couple of quick questions about what Mr. Hughes said. Um you said something about one of the roads was a rollover hazard for the trucks?
No, no ma'am. So currently, right now, at the intersection where the access to the Flying J is. It's essentially a two-lane road with a median in it. And so when the trucks are making a right turn. Out of the Flying J onto Route two oh seven, they are hitting the curb and rolling over the curb. And that constant um impact of those trucks hitting that curb damages the curb. So that's what I was speaking of. It's not a rollover hazard. The trucks are rolling over the curb.
The trucks are rolling over the curb.
Yes.
And that may need to be widened.
Yes.
Okay. And the buffer zone for this uh development, are we talking about trees, land and trees?
So in in accordance with the the PERC, there's a forty-foot undisturbed area that is required around the perimeter of the project. And so they do uh meet that.
Um with trees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything else?
So Mr. Hughes.
Mm-hmm.
Are kind of confused. The ninety-seven acres, that's what we're holding on or the two hundred and fifty-three acres? The ninety-seven, so. So the, so the total acreage in Land Bay A, which is identified by the purple. That's the perimeter of Land Bay A, the purple line around here. That total area is two hundred, approximately two hundred and fifty-six acres. This dash line here. That runs around this like this is approximately ninety-seven acres. So they are asking that the development that occurs within that ninety-seven acres be exempt from the current proffers. Everything outside of this red dashed area would still be subject to the proper requirements of the Carmel Church Station. So it's only the area that is within the red dash line.
And the proffers where there's certain amount of houses would be built before. We developed this. That was the original proffer or no?
No, no ma'am. So the original proffers require that there be. Prior to any development, that there be a a planning and design charrette or a charrette that created a design code. Then the project would be built in accordance with that design code. So and also that had to occur uh with phase one. So this amendment is asking to be exempt or asking that this project could proceed. In advance of development of the design code and absent of going through the the planning charrette process. So you know, the applicant, there is a way forward for them without an amendment. It would, they would just have to go through that design. Planning process, you know, have the charrette and create the design code. And then they could proceed with the development. What they are asking is that they be exempt from the planning charrette process. And any design code that is developed out of that process. And I'll let the applicant explain their rationales for making that.
Okay, I'll wait for that.
Mr. Hughes, we have to uh hold a public hearing on this as well?
Yes, but the applicant is present and has a presentation, so.
I have nothing further unless one of our commissioners. All right, sir. Please come forward and state your name, please.
Hi, um my name's Tom Nessel. I'm uh I'm with the applicant of IO Digital. Um Craig, is it possible to bring my presentation up on the screen that I emailed to Leon today? All right, sorry about that. Um again, uh my name's Tom Nessel. I'm with the applicant of IO. Of IO Digital. Um and uh thanks to uh. Mister Chairperson and the Planning Commission and um also to some of the folks who have helped out in this application um for getting us here tonight. Um and uh you know, Mr. Schwartz, I think you said last uh last time we were here that. The application was similar to reading Tolstoy in reverse, so hopefully we can make it a little bit better than that that tonight. Um so I'm just gonna give you a high level. Of what we're doing for context and then get into why we're here a little bit. Obviously, I think uh Leon's presentation covered a lot of ground, so. A lot of this might be a little uh duplicative, but so I'll skim over it, right? So. Again, here's the GDP on the screen here. Uh we're looking to build two thir- three hundred and fifteen thousand square foot data centers. Uh and associated sub- substation, roads, stormwater management uh to. Enable the construction of those two data centers. Um each building will include data halls, uh which are, which are the large computer rooms. Administration office space, uh a loading dock and a generator yard, as he pointed out, uh and parking. Um we estimate that the investment for these two buildings will be about two billion dollars. And uh as Mr. Hughes noted, there are some flagged areas within the parcel for uh future development. Um. Moving on here. So again, here's another map of the original PMUD uh with all of the land bays shown. Um in and and again, in two thousand and ten, the Carmel Church Station uh PMUD was passed. It's eleven hundred acres. Um and then so specifically, the proffers require the creation of a design code for the entire development. And a regulating plan for each land bay. The entire development is consists of many different types of uses as Mr. Hughes uh discussed. Um the owner of the Carmel Church Station hasn't yet developed these for any of the land bays. Uh as specific layouts and uses aren't yet determined across the entire piece of property. Um what we're looking to do is build these data centers inland Bay A. Uh where the current zoning does allow for data centers as of right, as Mr. Hughes pointed out. Um so what we're proposing to do are make amendments that allow the project to move forward now. But make sure it's subject to stringent standards that the county has already adopted. Um and Dr. Horton, or uh maybe it was Mr. Minor, um he had a question about the ninety-seven acres a little bit, so. Uh hopefully, this pictorial helps clarify the project area a little bit further. As you can see, within Land Bay A, there's, there's a red outline. Um and that's transferred over and zoomed in on the, on the thing, on the image to the right. Um so what we're requesting to do is exempt. These ninety-seven acres in the red dotted area from the design code and the regulating plan, which have not yet been developed. And instead, subject that those ninety-seven acres specifically to the PERC. Um. And also, obviously, the county's existing site plan requirements and the other proffers in the PMUD. Um and we like these data centers to be, all be developed within phase one. And that's kind of why the special district transect is is uh modified in the document. Okay. Um so it's a little hard to center right on the screen there. Uh thank you. So what what I want to communicate on this slide is the PERC has a lot of data center specific regulations. Uh the regulating plan is for the land bay and and contemplates understanding what its entire build-out will be. And the design code, again, is for the many different types of uses contemplated across uh the entire Carmel Church Station. Um so while we are exempting from the one, we are subjecting it to the other. And we understand that. The PERC having been developed specifically to regulate data centers um seems to make sense and it seems to be responsible planning. Uh from our point of view, right? So. The PERC regulates setbacks, heights, buffering, screening. Uh it talks about aesthetics and regulates them. Um such as facade accents, what types of building materials we can use, what colorways, lighting, uh et cetera. And as uh Mr. Hughes pointed out, sound. So what we want to do is move forward with the investment in the county now. Um and and be subject to the specific stringent data center regulations established by the PERC. In the specific area of the Carmel Church Station. And we think that this doesn't materially change the approved Carmel Church Church Station project. And leaves the requirements for the remaining development unchanged. We wanted to talk a little bit about the site. We really liked the specific location. Um as noted, we're we're bordering ninety-five, the CSX rail lines to the south, the truck stops to the north. And then we have uh environmental features to the west that create a bit of an isolated area for us. So within the PMUD. You know, we have a nice kind of piece of it um and that's somewhat isolated from the other parts of that development. Um it's, we like it that it's close to the interchange and we like that there's a, it affords a lot of natural screening. Uh we're over two thousand feet from Route one um and a little over eighteen hundred feet uh to the closest residences. Um and that's through very densely um densely wooded areas. Um and. The other reason we like the site, you know, it as. The current PMUD zoning allows for data centers and even before the PMUD was put in place. Um it was zoned industrial to allow industrial uses. And just some images on the left there that show you the extent of the current uh vegetation. That shows how screened the site is from. Various distances away from the project. Uh from a transportation aspect, I think uh Mr. Hughes covered this off well. Um there are, there will be one single private access driveway. Um all that comes off of the bottom of Welcome Way and it'll be, it'll continue privately to Rogers Clark through Welcome Way. Um and as he noted, we did do a traffic study. No new improvements are necessary. Uh out of, was the outcome of that traffic study. Um everything else on the traffic part, I think Mr. Hughes covered off. Environmentally, the construction will entirely avoid sensitive wetland areas that are in the project area. And more of it, more than 20% of the project area will remain open space. And that's, that's required under the PERT. We have had professional engineers delineate the wetlands so we know specifically what we're looking to avoid. On a water consum-, from a water consumption standpoint, our data center will deploy an air-cooled chilling system. So that will minimize water use and it'll be air-cooled and non-evaporative. So our chilled water will be on a closed-loop system and won't evaporate to the atmosphere. Most other data centers and other data centers the county has seen are water-cooled, which are, which can, or evaporative-cooled, which consume much more, much larger amounts of water. And something that came up at our community meeting last week, just for clarity, you know, that, that cooling system will run on chilled water and that chilled water will be treated by, will be treated to inhibit bacterial growth and, and avoid freezing, nothing that you wouldn't find in a pool or a soft drink. From a sound perspective, the project will comply with the PERT noise limitations. The project's surrounded on two sides, you know, by 95 and CSX, which create, you know, a fair amount of noise themselves. And then we will use noise dampening barriers both for the rooftop chillers and for the generators. So the image you can see on the bottom right here depicts the rooftop screen that hides the chillers on the roof. And then the generator wall that actually is, is a physical wall that separates the generators from, obviously, outside of the wall. Also, on top of that, each generator will be enclosed and muffled. From a, another piece of the noise perspective, when the generators do run for maintenance, they will each run only individually. They won't run all at the same time. And when they run individually, those individual runs will be done during business hours. From a, from some positive impact standpoints, where, you know, from a permanent job perspective, each one of those buildings, we estimate will, will produce about 30 permanent well-paying jobs. In addition to that, as was discussed at the town hall, there's about four additional jobs within the state that support each individual permanent job. And then there'll be hundreds of jobs during construction itself. We will commit to working with our contractor and building operator to ensure a very robust local outreach for employment is done. And that's both from a construction and permanent job perspective to, to try to capture tradespeople in the area to work the construction jobs. And then the various jobs that the permanent data center will offer will also have public outreach locally. Financially, talked about, about a $2 billion investment and that's for the construction and the computer equipment in those two buildings. You know, if we were to build out what that future development map looked like that Mr. Hughes presented, that would be about a $5 billion all-in investment. But those first two buildings are $2 billion. And a data center of this size, and this is per Davenport's information, the county's financial advisor from the town hall, for a 500,000 square foot facility, those tax revenues could range from 2 to 6, 6.75 million after the first year. And just to cover off, you know, one more piece of imagery to kind of end. So we talked about the design code that we're exempting from and we talked about the, the PERT ordinance. Just to give you, you know, a table of contents of, of each of those and what they regulate. You know, the design code, that table of contents is on the left and the PERT ordinance, table of contents is on the right to give you an, an idea of the scale. But that's, that's the, that's all for me today. For, for this presentation.
Mr. Nessel, commissioners, you have any questions you'd like to ask Mr. Nessel?
I do.
At the public hearing meeting, you had mentioned the generators were gonna run like 15 minutes a day.
Yes.
And that's 25 generators in one day.
No, so the way they will be spread out is they'll run 15 minutes per month per generator. So that 15 minutes will occur for that generator in that month during normal business hours.
So how many do you anticipate running in a day? Just one?
Well, we could, right, because there's only 25, but it, that's kind of subject to how the operations provider ends up running them. But, you know, you would, you would likely run five or 10 a day and then go through each, go through the entire, entire 25 in a week.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I know that had been brought up quite a few times by quite a few of the people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions. Data center of this size, the first two buildings, how long does, is the build out? And then after that, what is the life expectancy?
So from site plan approval, when we actually start construction, one of the buildings would take 18 months and we anticipate, for construction. And we would anticipate to stagger the second, maybe a few months later, probably about a quarter later. And that would also take 18 months or thereabouts. Useful life of, of the data center itself, I mean, the, the computer equipment inside of it, as you know, gets turned over every five years or so, subject to change over time, but the, the facility itself will last a very long time. Our, our lease on the land is a long, you know, a long period of time, but it is certainly in excess of 30, 30 years, 50 years. If, if not 100, I mean, there's no reason we can't make upgrades to these buildings.
Depends on technology, I guess, too.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. With AI these days, you know, you don't know where it's gonna go, but yeah, I mean, it'll be a long-term facility.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other commissioner have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Nessel.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'll now open a public hearing. Well, I tell you what. We're gonna take about a 10-minute break, when we come back, we're going to conduct the public hearing. So we will stand in recess for 10 minutes.
Gia.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now going to open the public hearing regarding RZ 03 2024. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward, state your name and your voting district. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Melissa Vaughn. I own property adjacent to this proposed development. And I live in Ashland, Virginia, so, I mean, it's the Reedy Creek, the Reedy Church, but I'm not a voting Caroline County person. And I understand that what they're saying about they're going to meet all the PERT requirements, but this is not a PERT district. And so we need to meet the Carmel Church Station. We need to have the Carmel Church Station Design Guidelines. We need to have the charrettes. We need to look at the roads. We need to look at the overlays and, and how, how the whole development is going to be put together. To skip that phase is to be irresponsible. A planning commission, you all made those rules. You all, you all put that into that plan. And, and so I really hope you keep that in the plan. And they can still have their data center, but they have to go through the planning and the regulations and the, and the part that, where we uncover all the opportunities, where we look at the problems. We look at incongruity. We, we find things out about the site. And if you don't go through that phase, you miss things. And as a practicing architect for 30 years, I, I know how much you miss. I am very well aware of what you miss when you don't do planning. I see it every day. So I hope that you'll reject this tonight so that we can do what's good for the community, so that we can invite the community into this planning process so that this development doesn't get a foothold and potentially make no housing want to be here. Because if one big development comes here without any planning, that does start to open it up and could mushroom into a lot of other, other people coming in and saying, well, we'll just try to come in here too without any planning. And there, there's a chance that Carmel's Church Station won't come to fruition if we don't hold, hold true to those values that we originally proposed of planning, design guidelines, aesthetics, you know, really looking at that whole development. So I would appreciate if you would reject this request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Carol Byers and I'm in the Reedy Church District. I oppose adding a data center in the large growth area of Carmel Church due to the concerns of environmental hazards and exposures for the businesses and residents. We have added multiple warehouses that are already starting to impact the infrastructure to the area. Other parts of the state, such as Northern Virginia, who have already allowed data centers, are declining the addition of more data centers in populated areas. I'm not opposed to additional growth in the area, but would like the county to consider a less populated area for the safety and the good of the citizens. And to add to that, I've lived not far from where Carmel Station is going in. I like the idea of the businesses, the, the different things that would draw families into the area. The data center is not what we want going into this area first to draw additional residents, additional businesses. I, I just can't see the vision of what this originally started out being by adding that data center. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, commissioners. Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District.
Good evening.
Uh, I don't have anything prepared. Came here running late. Got here just in time for a few of the comments tonight. Um, I wanted to focus on the fact that this area of land was designated for a specific purpose 15, 10, 15 years ago. Um, I just want to bring up the fact that it, it can sometimes appear that we're doing favors for certain developers over others within the county, just because they may have certain ties to people within the county administration, longstanding friendships, things like that. And I just want to make sure that we're looking at the project as a whole, because again, Carmel Church Station, the 1,100 acres was very well planned out. It was put in as part of the comprehensive plan change back in 2010. Um, so a lot of thought went into this, and I just want to make the point that appearances could lend to say that it's, you know, well, we're just going to allow this data center over here on this 97 acres because, you know, we, we think it, it fits better than what we decided 10, 10 years ago. I get it. It's a good location. It fits by right according to the amendments that have been made in the past. But just bringing that to light, I want the commissioners to really think about that on projects like this. When you make certain exceptions and you say, well, they don't have to follow the design standards because the PERT applies. Well, the PERT doesn't apply because the, the PERT is not an overlay district in this area. So you would have to make special adaptations to hold them accountable for that PERT standard. Again, the location, more than adequate as far as growth areas go. We're not adding a new growth area just to suffice adding a data center. So that makes sense. This is the type of planning and community engagement I think we need more of. Well-thought-out projects. I, I don't necessarily have a position whether this should be approved or denied tonight. Um, projects like this take a long time from, uh, you know, inception to pad-ready, you're talking 18 to 24 months. So there's a lot of time left to make decisions. I, I just think after zoning almost 1,000, 1,200 acres for the Madamiede project, uh, we need to just kind of pump the brakes and say, hey, we've got a lot of time to look at these projects and make sure they're going in the correct areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Third and final call. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one come forward, the public hearing is closed. The applicant now has, I think, 10 minutes to respond to any concerns if they would care to. It's not obligatory. How do you like that word?
Hi, um, just to briefly address a couple of the comments. One of the things that we like about the site is that it is self-contained by its nature. Our single point of access, uh, the boundaries with the rail line 95 and the, and the wetlands to the west create somewhat of an isolated piece of property that will kind of, in relation to the entire PUMD, this is a very self-sufficient, self-sustaining, isolated piece of parcel. And then, um, when it comes to data centers and, and other uses, one of the things I just wanted to point out is that, you know, data centers from a physical impact, from a traffic standpoint, have a, have a less, has a, have a lesser physical impact than some of the other allowed uses under the PUMD. So I just wanted to point that out that it doesn't, I'm not, those, those won't necessarily resolve all of the concerns, but I wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Nessel. We appreciate it. Just one quick question, Mr. Pennington. This area is designated for PERT, or, Mr. Hughes, is designated for PERT usage?
The, the zoning allows the data center uses, so just want a clarification. Um, one of the citizens noted that this area wouldn't be subject to the PERT, where the applicant is proffering that they would develop in accordance with the PERT guidelines. So by that proffer, it makes this area subject to the PERT requirements. Although there is a underlying zoning, but when they proffer that they're going to develop in accordance with a certain standard, then that becomes the standard. It's just like through the PUMD, the PUD process, as I noted, the, the regulating document becomes the zoning for that project. So they establish their zoning rules and regulations as a part of the original zoning. They are not subject necessarily to the zoning ordinance per se. Those regulating guidelines now become the governing zoning ordinance for the project, so.
And just for clarification, none of the process has been skipped? We've stayed in line with, with the processes? And from what I have read through all of the proffers, they are, they seem to be a bit more stringent than what is generally associated with the PERT. Would that be fair to say? Or more definitive, not necessarily restrictive?
So I'm not sure. Did you mean to say?
What, what I'm getting at is that in the proffers, is there anything at all, and I didn't see any, anything at all that is injurious to the county?
No.
Thank you.
So, so may I add to that? Because, um, I checked during the break with Mr. Hughes, because I, I think there's a, um, there's an idea that they're getting out of some rules and regulations and skipping some planning. I, I didn't see anything where they were, because we have special regulations for data centers. They're subject to some things that are much stricter than the other businesses that are going in this area. So they're still going to be subject to a lot of rules, regulations, planning. They've got, we've got a, that we approved, I think, several weeks ago, right, on the, what the data centers had, several months ago, I guess, what the data centers have to go through. So they are still subject to going through all of this planning, all of this regulations. And that are in some way stricter than what we require of the other businesses around there.
But let, let me clarify. They are indeed getting out of a requirement that is in the current proffers that before any development could occur on this property, that they would have to go through the charrette process, which is a planning process, and also the development of the design guidelines. That's what the citizen was speaking to that they're getting out of. So in, that is indeed the case. They're asking that they be allowed to develop this 97 acres outside of that prescribed process. Now, you are correct, they will still be beholden to the PERT ordinance. Now, they have proffered that they would indeed comply with those regulations, where if they had not proffered that, then the citizen would have been correct that, okay, now there are fewer requirements for the data center development. But they are, they have proffered that they would comport with the PERT ordinance and all of those standards. So I just want to be clear that you understand, they are indeed asking for an exemption to that initial planning process.
But they agreed to go along with those standards. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood correctly.
In, as an alternative, they have agreed to be subject to the PERT requirements. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so they are, they have agreed to be subject to them. And the other thing, oh, it was brought up about putting more houses in the area. See, the houses, and, and I mentioned, and some of us mentioned this every now and then, the county does not get a lot of taxes out of housing. What, what we need is some businesses that, large businesses that are like a cash cow that are kind of hidden, that don't cause a lot of problems or a lot of traffic, but will give us a lot of revenue.
Well, yeah, the, the introduction of commercial and industrial projects into your community, they do pay a higher tax, and it does believe the, provide some relief to the citizens, you know, in terms of their tax burden. Because, you know, the local government, the only way it produces revenue is through the taxes. And so if there's an opportunity to lessen that burden on the citizens, and I think that's, you know, a wise thing to do. And when you do have a, a diverse economy and a broad industrial-commercial base, and if you have large employers, then they're going to pay more in taxes than the citizens. And it allows the citizens' residential personal property tax rates to remain at a reasonable level.
Dr. Horton?
Yes.
I think if you look at this particular one, there's actually three pieces of paper here. The Carmel Church Station. Comparison of the original proffers and the proposed amended proffers. That in itself will take you two days to figure out what is really going on. And I just tried to look at it, make some sense out of it, but I'm telling you, it's two days worth of, I mean, it's only three pieces of paper. But you have to go back and forth to say, well, they were going to put this in, but now they're not putting that in, but they're putting this in instead. I mean, this, just these three pieces of paper will take you at least a week to go through and figure out what we're actually looking to approve or disapprove.
Yeah, I think we do need to go through this a little more carefully.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, commissioners, any further discussion? What is your pleasure? We can either approve, approve it with modifications, deny, or defer it until our next meeting.
Is this one mine or yours?
I would recommend we defer this, sir, at this time. There is too much data here to just sit here and render a decision, so I would say we defer this until our next meeting.
Motion by Mr. Weaver to defer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Horton. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor of deferring RZ 03 2024?
Mr. Hughes?
To the next meeting?
Right, to our next meeting, uh, for further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
That being the vision amongst the commissioners, we will conduct a roll call vote. Mr. Minor, how do you vote, sir? To defer or? Dr. Horton?
Yes.
Chair votes yea. Mr. Young?
Nay.
Mr. Weaver?
Yea.
And Mr. Williams?
Yea.
By a vote of five to one, this matter will be deferred until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you, commissioners. Any and all matters?
All right. Um, I have for you the last item on your agenda, which is the electronic participation policy. You may recall that I circulated this at your last regular meeting. It was drafted, um, I drafted it fairly quickly to get it to you then because you had a member that wanted to participate remotely. And the law has changed it a little bit over the last few years. Um, and, and it now requires that you have a policy like this in place in order to allow remote participation. Um, and so this is a, a Um, and so this is a, a fairly standard policy. Um, and I'm happy to go through it in detail, but in general, um, what the law says is that, um, you are entitled under FOIA, this is a FOIA issue, um, to, uh, hold all virtual meetings during a declared public emergency, right? So you have another COVID, and there's a public emergency, you can hold all virtual meetings, um, if you have a policy like this in place. And then during normal times, um, you can allow individual members to participate remotely in a meeting, provided you have a quorum present physically. Um, if you meet these four requirements, I mean, if they, if they meet, um, one of these four requirements. And so the difference there is any member at any time can log onto the Zoom and watch the meeting. But this would allow a member to, via Zoom or some other electronic process, um, actually participate, join the discussion, vote, uh, for motions, and have those votes count, um, from a remote location. And so this policy says that, um, in order to do that, you could, you would have to make the request that you are unable to attend the meeting in person due to one of four reasons. You have a, a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents your, your physical attendance. So we see that a lot, like someone's just homesick and maybe feels well enough to participate, but doesn't want to, you know, get the other members sick, so they'd like to join remotely. This would allow for that. Um, same, same goes if there's a member of your family that's sick, you're home caring for them, but you still want to participate. This would allow for that. Um, your principal residence is more than 60 miles from the meeting location. Um, or you're unable to attend just due to a personal matter, right? So you've got a kid's football game, or you've got, you're on vacation, um, and you can remote, you can participate remotely, but there's a cap on those, right? So, um, you can only, two meetings per county a year, 25% of the meetings you he, you have annually for that kind of catch-all, you know, any reason. Um, so as long as you meet one of those four requirements, you'd notify the planning commission. Uh, and under this policy, unless someone raises an objection, it's deemed approved and you're allowed to participate remotely. Um, so again, this is, um, a fairly standard policy. Uh, and it, I'm presenting it to you because the law allows for this, but you have to have a policy in place to take advantage, um, of that provision of FOIA. So that's what this does. Um, and if you have any questions about it, you want to go through it in more detail, uh, I'm happy to do that.
Mr. McKenzie, is this something that has to be approved by the board?
This, no, this is your policy. The board already has one of these.
Okay.
But when we, when, when we were contacted about somebody participating remotely, we looked for yours. So I think you got through the pandemic without one because we were able to have meetings. Um, and so there wasn't one in place. So unfortunately, I had to say you can't participate remotely presently because you don't have this policy in place. That's why we drafted it to give you that option in the future.
And would it be incorporated into the rules of order or?
It would, it's a standalone policy. So we would maintain it just like your rules of order, but it's standalone. And it would be reviewed an- annually because, because it's drawn from the Freedom of Information Act. We have to keep track of, if there's amendment to that statute, the policy might need to be updated. Um, but it would just be a standalone policy that I, I would, you know, I would expect that during our organizational meeting every year, just like we look at your rules, we'll check the policy, make sure it doesn't need updating, assuming, of course, that you adopt it.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Is, this is similar to what the board has? Is that what you were?
Uh, uh, yes, Dr. Horton, it is. In fact, this is more up to date, so I'm, I'm going to use this. Yeah, you got, you got the latest version, so I'm going to use this to update theirs too. Yeah.
All right, commissioners, any further questions or discussion? We need a motion to adopt this as, uh, a policy. If so, I move, so move that we adopt this as policy.
I would second that.
Motion by Chair, seconded by Mr. Williams. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. We appreciate that. Commissioners, is there a motion to adjourn until our March 28th, 2024 meeting at 6:30 PM?
No, sir. Mr. Hughes is on the floor.
Oh, I'm, you popped up on me. I'm sorry.
I, I did. I apologize. So, um, handed out to you tonight was a map of, uh, the existing and proposed expansion area for the Matamid, I'm, I'm sorry, for the MCD, what we call the MCD and PERT area. And I wanted to give that to you tonight so you have an opportunity to look at it and review it because at the next meeting, we're going to have a work session, uh, on this item and then move forward to a community meeting to give, uh, the citizens an opportunity to have some public input on the proposed expansion. But I wanted to give it to you tonight so you would have it, um, in case constituents ask you about it and you'd be prepared in advance of the work session next week so that if you had any questions, you could prepare those questions. Feel free to give us a call. The map has some statistics on it of, um, the, uh, PERT areas um, as they were adopted and proposed for amendments, so it's just for your information. If you want additional information regarding, you know, population in those areas, you know, please feel free to reach out to us and we can provide you that information, uh, in advance of the next meeting.
All right, so this will be brought up at our next regular meeting in March? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, work session.
In a work session?
Yeah.
And then we will hopefully conduct a, uh, community-style meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my plan is to invite the citizens out to a meeting to have a discussion about it. Not necessarily in this form, but in a separate form, so it's not a, an organized meeting. We'll put notices out, send mailers to the citizens in the area so they can come out and participate in that process, um, before we bring it forward, so.
And the, and the work session is on expanding the growth area towards this way, I mean, the, uh, PERT.
Yes, ma'am.
And this way?
No, ma'am.
Just this side now, the eastern side.
Yes, ma'am. You're going to have a public hearing on the other side.
Yeah, we did.
Well, you, you've scheduled a public hearing to make a determination on that side at the next meeting as well, so. But I just wanted to make you aware of, of the map and give you an opportunity to, you know, reach out to us and ask questions if you have, if you want some additional information, so.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All right, there was a motion on the floor that had been properly seconded to adjourn until March 28th?
You move? You make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I second.
Thank you. All, any further discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned until March 28th? I'll catch up in a year sooner or later.